Call to order the Carney School District Board of Education, please rise for the Pledge of Ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the bound, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Len Rowden.
Here.
Meredith Cole.
Here.
John Curran.
Here.
Reese Whitezer.
Here.
Nick Plaskas.
Here.
Susan Morton.
Here.
Marlene Bailey. And we have a quorum present. Adopt the agenda.
Move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Public comment? We have no public comment tonight. Recognitions.
Tonight, Dave Schwarzenbach is going to come to the podium for a very special recognition.
He probably heard that the girls won state wrestling last year and had a great brain recognition stuff. And then following that, Coach Ward, our head coach, got recognized as head coach of the year. Sometimes it's very easy to go, oh, you get, you know, you win state, you get head, you know, you get to be the head coach of the year. It's not really how it works. Basically, what Misha does, our state association, they pull in a lot of data and look at who is the best ambassador for girls wrestling out of the 230 programs in the state. And so Coach Ward was that person, so I'm happy to introduce him tonight.
Well, the email Ray sent said that Dave was talking, so. So I'd just like to thank you guys for bringing me in, recognizing me, and I feel like I was telling him on the way in, it's, there's a lot of jokes in the hallways from my peers about, oh, coach of the year, it's coach of the year, look out, it's coach of the year. And I'm like, this is getting old. So, you know, and we all like to get recognized, but, you know, it'd be silly to not recognize that the people that I have in my program, the staff people that help coach wrestling, the boys staff, Coach Hill and his gang, and the administration that supports us. And, you know, I go in and I have a lot of ideas that I run by Dave, and he asks lots of questions, but he usually gives me carte blanche to kind of go out and try the things I want to try. And so, you know, I just want to thank everybody. I thank Dave for having trust in me and hiring me to be the head women's coach and for allowing me the flexibility to kind of build that program and my vision. And, you know, thanks for the, you know, Ray wrote a really nice article, the football ceremony, I was like, this is just also great. And so now I'm like, oh, I gotta go one more time? And there's, now there's a secret talk. So that's all I've got. I'm just super thankful for the recognition. It feels great to be recognized by the board and by your administration, and just thanks for the continued support. And we hope to, we hope to run it back again this year, that's the plan, so.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, school spotlight. Ms. Perrin with the Carney Middle School, media teacher and several of her students.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We are representing the Carney Middle School Media Team. I have here Abby, Ava and Blaine. We have a few slides that we have prepared to present for you. We represent our media class as the Bulldog Bulletin is the name we associate with our broadcasting program, offered to seventh graders at a semester-long course at the middle school. And so we're going to begin with a video that my class put together, just to shortly introduce a few of our students here.
Hi, I'm Ava.
I'm Hallie.
I'm Maddie.
I'm Grace.
I'm Colleen.
I'm Tess.
I'm Morgan.
I'm Easton.
I'm Abby.
And this is the Bulldog Bulletin.
And generally, this intro is what our students have put together to kind of introduce our show. And generally, we do normal broadcasting announcements to our middle school that is watched every first hour. Just to begin, I work with about 40 students through two classes. These are some members of our third hour class. You guys might recognize some names in here. And then this will be our fourth hour class as well, about 20, 21 kids per class. Just to break down some of the, you know, the fundamentals I like to teach during this class, we do focus on the four Cs of 21st literacy skills, and a lot of it is critical thinking. Really, we work hard on prioritizing information. And so I have Ava, Abby and Blaine, who are going to share a little bit more about how they, working on a main anchor script, how they go about making sure they have the correct information to share with our school. So we will start with Abby.
So we have a calendar that we look at, and then we get the important events, and then put it in order in the script of the important events that we do. And then we like go back almost like every other segment, back to the main anchors, directing them back to another segment.
Every announcement is like the following week or like that upcoming week. And it's just about like, just like any like important news that we need to like hear about for our school.
We find the information that's like recent, that's upcoming, and that's what we put in our show.
Up next, we do focus a lot on creativity at the middle school level, the amount of ideas that these students have, and just putting that into fruition in a helpful way to get that information out to our school. And so we have, I wanted to showcase Ava and Abby and Blaine and some of their bits that they have actually created on their own, that really are trademarked throughout the show, and you'll see the other groups of students kind of chime in and use their ideas as well. And so one of the ideas that Ava and Abby, actually, I'd like for you to talk about your Ava and Abby adventures a little bit before I show this.
So we like kind of like took the idea from the last year class, it was like Ella Explains, and we're like finding like things that like are like students like need help with and like educating them on like how to like do them better, or like, just like do stuff like, like if they're like being disrespectful or something like that, we like bring it into the show, showing them how to do it right.
We like teach other students how to become like more like organized, like if your locker's messy, we like give examples on how to like not do that.
And so just a short clip from Ava and Abby's adventures.
Come on, let's roll.
And that is just a trademark that they have started in the class. We also have a third hour, a student named Sophia, who is starting morning affirmations, is kind of a mindful moment to start off our days, just kind of gaining those SEL skills. And then Blaine has started our morning KMS from homecoming.
Give me a K.
K.
Give me an N.
N.
Give me an S.
S.
What's that spell?
K-M-S.
And that's just a small snippet from this. And so just the creativity is wild in our classroom, and it's just really nice to see them focus on making the school a better place through their creativity. And then last but not least, we have collaboration and communication. We are solely a group-based classroom, and so they are working with students that they might not have worked with before in previous classes. And so they really need to work on this team communication, along with time management, and just working with other people's styles of how they manage their time and how they can all accomplish the same goal. And so we're going to start with Blaine this time to speak on like what it's like working with new students who they've probably never met before, and just that team effort mindset.
So prioritizing our time, we just, we do stuff quick, but we don't do it so quick that it sounds bad. And that's really it.
You have to understand everyone's like point of using your group, so that like you, like you're not siding with like one person, so you can all like accomplish your video together like faster.
We do like a good job of like breaking up the roles, like we have two people that are the main anchors that go in front of it, and then there's someone that's working on the audio, making sure the audio is picking up, and then someone that's behind the camera, making sure it's lined up. And then we do a good job of like flipping the jobs around, so everyone's doing every job.
And this is your presentation for the KMS Bulldog Bulletin in the media classroom. Thank you, guys. And any questions?
I have a question for you guys. Are you able to get all of this done during class, or do you have to do prep work outside of class to do this as well?
So usually, we get it done like in class, but if we like are running out of time, we just go back in seminar, which is just like another class, like at the end of the day, where you just like do your homework. And so you just like go back to media and then just finish that, and then you'll be done, and then like it'll be filmed for like the next day. But if you like film it two days ahead, then you could just edit the next day in class.
How many days in advance do you film?
We usually film like one day or like two, we try to do it like two days before the show is supposed to go out film, and then the next day, come back in and edit, and then the show should be able to go out that next day.
Do you have like a blooper, bloopers reel yet, like? Have you got that?
Can you see that?
Good. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Picture, picture up front.
Picture up front. You guys are welcome to stay, but you also don't feel like you have to, because you may have the meeting. Okay, consent agenda.
Move that consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Action items.
Nope.
Oh, sorry. Good job. Good catch, guys.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Oh, no.
Information items. Ginger with finances, financials.
Included in your packet for this month are the reports reflecting actual activities through September and forecasted activities for the rest of the year. No, it's too early in the year to really tell where we're going to end up, but we did increase a little bit based on recording actual payrolls for September. Does anyone have any questions?
And Ginger, there will be a budget amendment next month, is that correct?
Yes. No questions? Thank you, Ginger. Bond project update with Mr. Nolan.
So the construction guys got a break tonight. We are really in between phases of the bond construction. So the update is that the last few items that needed to be completed from the summer construction, they are finishing up this week, and then on the morning of next Thursday, Friday, Saturday, should have everything complete in those projects at the high school theater, junior high, middle school restrooms and the EEC. DLR is continuing with the design phase. They've turned out schematic design and they're into design development, and they'll continue to refine that and finish up with construction documents before Christmas, present those to Newkirk, and Newkirk is planning on having those go to the street for bid early January and have a bid package to you all at the February board meeting. So that's kind of the, where we're at in all of that. Did want to kind of preview, the air handlers at Southview, kind of a standalone item because the HVAC equipment is going to need to be ordered a little quicker than the rest of the bid package. And so Ben had said that those, the material, the equipment is going to be presented to you all next month for approval to bid the items. So you'll see that next month. Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. September membership comparisons. Dr. Miller?
So Tammy Thomas, she does, she's our data coordinator, and she does a great job every year of providing, you know, what our September enrollment information is for you. Again, you know, if you think back to our demographic study with Rick Bramer, we anticipated a modest decrease in enrollment, which we experienced this year. Again, our 10 range, 10-year range forecast, we know that the enrollment will increase with new development, but just wanted to make sure that we're putting this in front of you on an annual basis.
Thank you. Program evaluations, we have two written program evaluations for review, and then Jennifer Cope will present on the counseling program.
Any questions for Dr. Gilkey for the gifted program evaluation? Any questions for Mrs. Cope regarding the grant-funded?
Okay, so this is the review for the counselors, school social workers, as well as the career readiness coordinator, and there's a reason we lump them all in together. The school counseling program really hits three areas, and it's academic, career, and social emotional. Because the job of the school counselor, it truly just got to be a huge undertaking. And with there being so much more social emotional need, and with career education ramping up more than ever, especially with the Kaufman Foundation doing real-world learning, there is no way school counselors can handle all of that under their umbrella. So they get a lot of help. I'm going to introduce you to our school counselors. These are our high school school counselors, Ashley James, who's new with us this year, Mandy Jury, and Janelle V. Both of our junior high counselors are new to the junior high this year, but they were already here. We had Kaylee Steeby that joined the junior high from the middle school, and Eric McMaines came from the high school to the junior high. He kind of did a little bit of musical chairs this year. Jennifer McNeely has been longtime counselor at the middle school, and Amanda Gray joined us this year. She took Kaylee Steeby's position. And then our elementary counselors have remained the same. You'll see the familiar face of Lisa Lee in there, she is a 550, she retired from Southview Elementary, but she does help us out with our LENS program. And then we have Kami Aberstall at Dogwood, Tara Spry at Hawthorne, she also helps at LENS, we kind of piecemeal that, Elaine Tyner at Carney Elementary, and Tracy Wagner at So as far as social emotional, the tier one, it is that classroom instruction, the classroom lessons, that really our school counselor can handle those social emotional issues at that point. That's just the basic things that go on every day. When they need, when a child needs a little bit more support, that's when we start leaning more on the school social workers. It could be the school counselor, they could be working with them one-on-one, they could be pulling a small group, but we really, that tier two and tier three, we start working with our school social workers. The primary responsibilities of the school counselors, I mean, they help with staff training, they do a lot in career education, not on their own. If you notice the bullet points that have an asterisk after them, that means that that is something that now they are supported with either the career readiness coordinator, who's Stacy Holtzclaw, or with the social work team. Career education, of course, Stacy Holtzclaw takes lead in that. They are key in implementing that multi-tiered system of support, but they pull the school social workers in to help. They run programs, especially at the high school, and they help with all the scholarship opportunities and different, you know, pulling in colleges to meet with the kids and all that kind of stuff that they have always done. They do the whole lessons, they do individual counseling, you just, you see the list of things. Those, these are their primary jobs. This is our staffing ratio for counselors. Clearly, we are over on a number of them. They, the DESI recommended is like 250, but I will say, with all the additional support we have with school social workers and the career readiness coordinator, they, they do take a lot of that burden off of the school counselors. These are our school social workers. Megan Masters is our lead social worker, Erin Thomasma, and Amanda Texter is new to us this year. And they have a whole different list of responsibilities, but really, they do work as that liaison between the school and families. When there's, there's big issues with families, that's when we need our, our school social workers to step in. They, and, and it is Megan Masters mainly, she's got the heavy lift of really connecting our kids with the outside therapy services that are provided through, it's funded through the Clay County Children's Fund. And in a minute, you'll see the different agencies that we work with. They do a lot of the panorama data collection, they're there for crisis intervention, certainly the school counselors do that as well, but the school's social workers get pulled in on that. They deal a lot with the community, they get the donations, which we have an incredibly generous community, so they take in a lot of donations. They facilitate the resource fair, which is huge for the community. They really help those McKinny into our homeless kids. They're the people that are on the front line with those kiddos that need a lot of support. Here's more. We count on them also for staff training. They are high attendance issues, they're the ones that are working with those kids, they work with harvesters. But again, the logistics of that Clay County Children's Fund and getting those kids those services, that's, that's a huge lift. This is just kind of a list of professional development that either our social workers and counselors, they either have facilitated, or they have attended all of these. They're so, I mean, they're always willing to present to the staff to help in any way, you know, so the staff can help support the kids who might be having trauma issues. These are the outside providers that we deal with. Carney Family Counseling, they are, they provide the majority of our individual and group therapy now, but we do get help from Preferred Family Healthcare, they're more drug prevention. Ricky Moran, she, she comes in and works with our kids on behavior intervention. The Creative Pathways, that is our art therapist. Character Strong is a social emotional curriculum. These are the services that are provided through the Children's Fund. And break them out, expressive therapy, that art therapy and art journaling, that's very popular with the kids, had 292 kids serve this past year. Here's our small groups, we had 339 students served in SEL, to be totally transparent, they were over-served. This year, we're reeling back some on those small groups and focusing more on our high-needs kids that need that individual therapy. We did serve 148 kids with individual therapy, with 57 of them being discharged from services.
How many did you say were doing art therapy? I'm sorry. 292.
Yeah, that's very popular. The kids really like that. Kaylee Whackman, who is the art therapist, she actually hadn't, I mean, she, she lives over in Johnson County, she worked at Children's Mercy, I mean, she's amazing, and she had another opportunity, but she loved working with our kids so much, she's like, I'm going to make this work. And so she still comes back in and she's working with our kids a couple days a week. This is our behavior interventionist, Ricky Moran. Created 14 behavior plans for students, and that is, they observe, they create a plan, they give the plan, the teachers, administrators, parents, they come in, they, they observe and make sure everybody's following the plan with fidelity. And they also supported kids in small groups in the best classrooms, and then they went in and did RTI groups at the elementary schools. The social workers facilitated the signs of suicide program. That is a tri-county program, but our social workers are the ones that facilitate that. And out of 899 students surveyed, in the end, 48 students ended up. kids so much, she's like, I'm going to make this work. And so she still comes back in and she's working with our kids a couple of days a Um, this is our behavior interventionist, Ricky Moran. Created 14 behavior plans for students and that is, um, they observe, they create a plan, they give the plan, the teachers, administrators, parents, they come in, they, they observe and make sure everybody's following the plan with fidelity. Um, they also supported kids in small groups in the best classrooms and then they went in and did RTI groups at the elementary schools. The social workers facilitated the signs of suicide program. That is a tri-county program, but our social workers are the ones that facilitate that. And out of 899 students surveyed, um, in the end, 48 students ended up needing additional support or referrals for, for their help. And the school social workers also manage the resource fair. Certainly, the school counselors help them immensely, but it is the school social workers that take in all the donations and get everything put together. Um, Stacy Holtzclaw is our career readiness coordinator and she really has two areas that she focuses on. The real world learning, as you know, as next year, it's a graduation requirement to get an MVA as part of your graduation requirement. So that's really her focus is she tracks those MVAs, she educates the staff, she educates the students, she's educating parents on what this is, what kids need to do. She's always working with kids, pulling them in, telling them about opportunities. Um, and her other piece of her job is just that career education. Um, you know, finding those experts to come in and talk to classes. We are really building up our project-based learning. So getting experts to come in and talk to kids is even at the elementary level, um, talk to kids, hearing the experts talk about these different careers is, is very impactful. This is how our kids are getting, well, this is the percentage, you can see how we, um, in 2021, we had almost 56%. And then in '22, we dipped down to about 47. And I really think kids just, they just wanted to be in school and they wanted things to be normal and they didn't want to go out to internships and all this kind of stuff. They were tired of things being messed up from the pandemic. So we, we did drop, but in 2023, we had a nice jump back. We had a 75% goal and we were at almost 76. So we're pretty happy with that. And this is how they're getting them. Um, of our graduates last year, 43 of them participated in internships, 135 of them with client-connected projects, 86 with college credits. And then SEAL of Bili literacy was a new one for us and we had six kids obtain the SEAL of Bili literacy. And that's it. Any questions?
Hey, Jennifer, do you have to like to get kids to the market value at the end? Do you have to get, you have to work really hard to find companies? Cause I've noticed like on Facebook that we're asking like, hey, do we have a company here, company there? Is it where we're trying to place the kids or where the kids want to go? Or is it just, we're continuing to build that base of?
She is building that base all the time and, and a lot of kids come in asking for things that are very specific. So she puts it out there, you know? Do you, and every time she puts things out, she gets great feedback, you know? Or I can't, I can't help you with that, but would love to help you with that. I even get emails saying, hey, I know you guys are looking for partners and, you know, I ship it over to, to Stacy. But, um, the more people find out about it, the more they want to help.
I have to give Jennifer and Stacy a lot of credit. Um, I think you've done a great job of really partnering with parents. Um, you, do you want to talk a little bit about your parent meeting and really go, even starting at the junior high level to educate parents? What is a marketed value asset? And I think parents are pretty excited about that.
They have, I mean, honestly, in all the time that we've had meetings, because generally nobody ever shows up to talk to us. And this is the, talking about market value assets, that's been the one time people really, I think we, connecting it to the, as a graduation requirement, that, that kind of perked people's interest a little bit. And the parents have, they've been so positive about it. I mean, people that came in pretty negative, like they did not agree with this. And when it was, after we met with them, they're like, okay, I got it. This is, I mean, I heard zero complaints after the meetings. They all thought this is, this is a really good thing.
Well, and it's, it's an important place where high school is the place to take risks and try before you get to the expensive college setting, right? And so, appreciate doing that.
Or even the real, even real-world setting where you go to a career that you don't necessarily want to go and now you're having to pivot four or five years down the road.
And I'll tell you, when we go to some of these different meetings, um, especially the success-ready schools network meetings, we, I'm, we are really way ahead of pretty much everybody. So we feel pretty good when we go to these meetings.
Speaking as a parent of a recent high school grad, and for those of you that have littles that are getting ready to come up, I can't say enough good things about Stacy Holtzclaw and I have no idea how she gets as much done as she gets it done. She must not sleep or something. She is phenomenal.
She's like a little water bug.
She's everywhere.
Great job.
Can we backtrack just a second? I want to ask, no, Heather, I wanted to ask Heather a question about the gifted program. How, do we currently, do we test every student at a particular grade level for, for gifted?
All first graders.
Do you want to go up to the mic? Sorry.
Nobody asked me a question.
We screen all first graders in the spring. That way it's universal. We want everybody to have that opportunity and it's non-verbal. So we kind of take all the other things out of play and really just get a good idea of how they think.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Now, action items. Resend and adopt board policies on second reading.
Move to rescind board policy G150P and S145P effective October 18th, 2023 and to move to adopt effective October 18th, 2023, same board policy numbers on second reading as presented today.
Second?
All in favor? Opposed? Um, approval of board manual.
Move to approve the 2023-2024 board manual as presented.
Second?
Um, all in favor? I guess I need to ask if there's any discussion.
Guess not.
Oppose? Guess not. Um, approval of professional learning facilitator position.
Move to approve the position of professional learning facilitator as presented.
Second?
Dr. McMains, would you like to give a brief description?
Sure. Uh, as many of you know, we have a very deep cohort of retired teachers, highly trained retired teachers that the district has invested a lot. Uh, many of them want to come back and give back to their colleagues, um, not as full-time teachers, of course, but come back at times. We, you know, uh, anything from authentic literacy to project-based learning. Um, I know that we've had, uh, implementing with NWEA are one of our new assessments, benchmark assessments, uh, that we're using. I know we've used the middle school, but implementing that throughout the other grade levels, we've had retired teachers come back and help us. Uh, like I said, they would do it for free, but we would like to pay them for their time. Um, and to do that, we need to have a position approved by the board so that we're able to do that. Uh, we would go by the daily rate, um, of these teachers at the time of retirement. But again, it's, it's, we could go out and outsource, uh, this, this professional development to other places, but these teachers know our kids, they know our staff, they know the way we do it here in Carney, which is the way we think it needs to be done. And it just makes sense that, that we would allow them to come back and work with our, with our staff and our students.
So how many hours or days is planned for this position?
Well, uh, I don't know that there is a, a, a plan. Um, we'd be going, we would be going along with our professional development plan. Um, we would bring them in at times that we would, we would, um, not incur any other local monies, it would be professional development money that would be used for this. And really would just, uh, it would supplant what we would use for outside agencies that we would have already budgeted for. We would use retired teachers locally.
Thanks. Would you do it by department or elementary versus secondary or how?
You know, I don't know if that plan, and maybe Mrs. Cope can jump in here too.
It's really on an as-needed basis. Um, we just have some people that they were doing great things when they were here and we want them to come in and teach the rest of the staff how to do it. I mean, that's, we've, we spent a lot of money training our teachers. So when they retire, we want them to come back and train others. It's, it really is a train the trainer, but they're just people who have already retired.
And as Mrs. Cope said earlier, uh, we feel like we do it better than everyone else right now and we want to use, uh, at least we feel that way. And I think our perform, our student performance shows that and we want to use the folks that we know are going to be effective with our, with our teachers.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Um, approval of new hire.
Move to approve new hires Carrie Prom and Kate Antos as presented.
Second?
All in favor? Oppose? Okay. Board member comments?
Well done, Bree.
Bree, you did a phenomenal job.
We're not done yet, guys. There's still time. Give me a minute. Um, important dates. Um, October 24th is the KHSA auditorium celebration. Um, and then October 28th is the EEC ribbon cutting and open house. November 1st is early release. November 7th is board candidate information session. And then November 15th is the next scheduled board meeting. Miscellaneous.
Action for a closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in November, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section 610-021, also known as Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second?
Roll call.
Len Broughton?
Yes.
Meredith Cole? Yes. John Kern?
Yes.
Reese Schweitzer?
Yes.
Nick Vasquez?
Yes.
Susan Mormon?
Yes.
Eileen Bailey.
And we're adjourned.
Yay.